Morning, everyone, and welcome. We will call the Committee of the Whole meeting to order. And for roll call, we have all our councillors here, with the exception of councillor Tim Harding, who is homesick. So at this time, I would ask for a member of council to make a motion to excuse councillor Harding due to illness. Moved by councillor MacPherson, second by councillor... Peter. Gee. I'm losing it here this morning. Too many things on my mind, I guess. So all those in favor signify. For or against, press your button, please. Okay, motion carried. We do have an agenda in front of you, council. Is there any additions anyone would like to make to the agenda? Seeing none, would somebody like to move the addition of agenda, please? Moved by councillor Lutz, second by councillor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried, thank you. Disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there any member of council at this time would like to declare a conflict of interest in any part of the agenda that we're working on? No? All right, we shall move on to our first presentation, Financial Services Policy, F I N 05-009, Personal Property Tax Reduction Adoption. And are looking for a motion to approve? No? We... Wrong agenda? Okay, sorry. That's the next one. All right, thank you. All right. Good start here this morning. All this crowd's got me all worked up. All right. Approval of minutes, January the 21st, 2025. Did anyone see any errors or omissions in those minutes? No? Okay. Can we get a motion to approve, please? Councillor MacPherson, and second by councillor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried, thank you. And now for the January 23rd, 2025 Special Committee of the Whole. Anyone see any errors or omissions in those minutes? Oh, okay. We have a mover and a seconder. Okay. Moved by councillor Sappington, second by councillor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried. Now we've got business... Is there any business arising from the 21st? No? Okay, we'll move on then. And is there any business arising from the Special Committee of the Whole on January 23rd? No? All right. Now, number six, proclamation, request for the month of March 2025. So there's... There we go. We'll get you turned on there. There you go.
There we go, testing. Okay, excellent, excellent. Hang on. There we go, a little better. Good morning, community of the whole. It's my pleasure to be bringing forward to you the proclamations for the month of March. Let's just hope this works and... Okay, perfect, that's working. Excellent, love it. Okay, then, so the origin for these proclamations is tied to our strategy for belonging and proclamation policy, COM 02003. The intent is to present proclamation request into municipal council for adoption in accordance with the proclamation's policy. And under section 4.1 of this policy, it reads that it is the policy of council to consider such requests that proclaim certain causes when such proclamation positively impacts the community. I've got... To get started, I have March 8th, which marks International Women's Day, which is celebrated annually worldwide. It's an important occasion that honors and celebrates the achievements and contributions of women across all walks of life, while also raising awareness of the ongoing fight to achieve gender equity. This year, our theme for 2025 is Accelerate Action, which is highlighting and calling for increased momentum and urgency in taking steps towards greater gender equity. I'd also like to note that the Third Annual International Women's Day luncheon is going to be held. However, all the details on that are still pending, so we will keep you updated on that as the details come out. Up next, March 21st marks International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination. This observance recognizes the many prejudices and injustices fueled by racial discrimination that occur on a daily basis. The day for this observance also commemorates the Sharpville massacre in 1960, where during a peaceful demonstration in this South African township against the country's apartheid past laws, police had opened fire on demonstrators, which ended up injuring at least 238 of them and killed at least 91 of them. Finally, to close this all off, March 31st marks the International Day for Transgender Visibility, which celebrates joy and visibility amongst transgender communities while acknowledging and raising awareness of the struggles and challenges they face by merely being themselves. It's a day to celebrate and acknowledge trans folks who call the municipality of the county of Kings home and deserve just as much love and acknowledgement as anyone else who would call this place home. And on a more personal note, this is especially important to acknowledge due to the current state of the world right now being very unfriendly towards transgender and non-gender conforming individuals. A draft of all three proclamations are attached to proclamation passage that have been passed out to y'all prior to this meeting, and there should be no financial implications for this decision. My proposal aligns itself with the strongest community pillar of our strategic plan, and the implementation would be that the proclamations be published to the municipality's website and social media platforms, and the reading of the official proclamations at any relevant events. We will have community events and/or social media awareness building around all the approved proclamations, and the alternative is that committee of the whole may choose not to recommend any or all of the three proclamations I've proposed for you today. Therefore, this leads to my recommendations this morning, that committee of the whole recommend municipal council proclaim March 8th as International Women's Day, that March 21st be proclaimed as International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination, and that March 31st be proclaimed as International Transgender Day of Visibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, the councillors on the... From the presenter? No? Okay, so do we have a mover of the recommendation, please? Moved by councillor Allen, second by councillor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Thank you, Samuel. And now First Nations consultation.
There's two more.
Oh, two more? So we got to do them all separately then? Okay. And so we have the second motion. We have a mover and a seconder for that. Councillor Lutz, second by councillor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried, thank you. And for the... Now for the third one, do we have a mover? Moved by councillor Best, second by councillor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Corcom and council. I am here today to present a request for decision regarding First Nations consultation. The origin of this request is a memorandum of understanding with Annapolis Valley First Nations from May 2019. The intent of today's presentation is to provide committee of the whole with the necessary information to permit administration to begin consultation discussions with Nova Scotia First Nations. Consultations with First Nations has been mandated by the United Nations, the Supreme Court of Canada, the Government of Canada, and the Government of Nova Scotia. Under the Constitution Act, First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples have distinct rights, including access to ancestral lands and resources, and the right to self-government and self-determination. To protect these rights, all governments... All levels of government in Canada have utilized consultation as a protection method. Consultation often occurs on legislative or administrative matters that may impact First Nations governments or communities. In 2019, the municipality entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Annapolis Valley First Nations. These preliminary discussions and agreements laid the groundwork for consultation processes. However, an organization-wide consistent strategy has not been developed to date. Administration has established a working group to implement a meaningful First Nations consultation process applicable across all departments. To ensure the process is effective, the municipality needs to send letters to Nova Scotia First Nations governments and administrative representatives inviting them to conversations pertaining to municipal areas of importance the First Nations communities would like to see addressed in our consultation process. Protocol conventions state that letters directed to First Nations governments should, in best practice, be directed by council and signed by the mayor of the issuing municipality. To ensure council support, the working group requests that committee of the whole recommend to council that these letters be issued by administration so that the consultation process can begin. There are no financial implications for this step, and it aligns with the existing strategic plan through... Under strong communities and good governance. Once the letters are issued, the working group will work with First Nations to develop a First Nation consultation standard operating procedure, develop guidelines and identify municipal projects that may impact First Nations communities, develop communication, engagement, and consultation plans to be utilized across municipal departments, and to develop mechanisms for ongoing evaluation and improvements to the consultation process. The primary engagement for this project will be with Nova Scotia First Nations governments and representative organizations to develop strategic partnerships pertaining to municipal consultation. Due to federal and provincial consultation requirements, there are no alternative options other than developing a consultation strategy. Which brings us to the recommendation that committee of the whole recommend municipal council direct the C A O to formally issue letters to the First Nations of Nova Scotia initiating the process of consultation discussion as outlined in the February 18th, 2025 request for decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay, is there any member of council have any questions to the presenter? No? Okay, we have a mover and a seconder. Moved by councillor Best, second by deputy mayor Peckford. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Councillor Hiltz, your vote. Councillor Hiltz would like to declare that he voted in favor.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carried. We'll move on to Open Arms funding proposal, and deputy C A O, Rob Frost.
Good morning, mayor, and good morning councillors. So here to present a recommendation and request for decision of Open Arms funding request. So just as a reminder, Open Arms approached the municipality as well as the towns in Kings County to support their winter outreach program back in January. The estimated total program cost was $173,000. Included in the funding that they had already attained was $22,000 from the Office of Addictions and Mental Health, and just over $15,000 from the Wolfville Interchurch Council. So the total ask of the municipal units in Kings County was just over $136,000. The M O K portion of that, based on uniform assessment of population, would be $103,400. So normally, when we receive any request from a nonprofit organization, we would refer them to our grants policy, as staff are guided by legislation, bylaws, and policies that we currently have in place. For us, over $50,000 grants policy speaks only to capital projects. So as our current grants policy stands, if we were to receive such an ask, we would say go to the grants policy, but unfortunately, it only speaks to capital projects. There are a few groups that have been removed from the grants policy a number of years ago, and there'll be further discussion on others. It's usually only done when it's considered a possible municipal responsibility, and we try not to get into areas where it would be considered at a different level of government, like the province. So current and future funding, so as of right now, Open Arms requested $400,000 last year through the grants process for a capital project that they are working on, and the council of the day provided $32,000, almost $33,000 for that capital project. Staff did speak with Open Arms as to the status of this project. It was anticipated that it would be possible to transfer these funds because they had already been given for the operating, but we were informed that this project is still underway and that those funds will be utilized for this project. So the alternatives to our recommendation is that council could ask staff to provide other options for immediate funding, but with that, we have put forward a recommendation that committee of the whole recommend municipal council direct Open Arms to the community grants program for future funding as outlined in the February 18th request for decision.
Okay, thank you, deputy C A O. And any member of council have any questions to the deputy C A O? Councillor Lutz.
Thank you, mayor, through you. Respecting the work of staff, is there any in-kind support that could be offered from the municipality where the council to choose this recommendation? So I'm thinking access to drop-in space was one of the requests as part of the program. The municipality has relationships with various service providers and other levels of government, like villages. Is there any in-kind support that the municipality could give to Open Arms in lieu of the funding that they've requested?
Through you, Mayor Corcom, to councillor Lutz. Certainly, we didn't have those discussions. If that was a direction of staff, we could certainly work with Open Arms on that.
And can I ask a follow-up, mayor?
Sure.
Thanks. Have any of the other municipalities approved the ask from Open Arms?
Through you, Mayor Corcom, not that I'm aware. I do know that it was not approved by Kentville. I'm not sure of Wolfville's decision.
And was Burbank also asked?
I believe so, and I'm not sure of their decision as well.
And just one final question. They do have committed funds from the Department of Mental Health and Outreach, the $22,000, and then I think the $15,000 from the interchurch. Will they be able to proceed with any version of the drop-in program with those funds, based on your knowledge and the conversations that you've had with them so far? Or does, you know, doesn't decline on our part mean death to the program?
Through you, Mayor Corcom, to councillor Lutz. Certainly, I mean, in the... I know that they're doing as much work as they can with the funds that they have. So obviously, without funds, they probably are limited in what they can do.
Okay. I do have one more, but I'll let other councillors speak, and then if you could come back to me at the end. Thanks.
Councillor MacPherson.
Thank you, mayor, through you. Just wondering if there's been any update on the provincial government and whether or not there has been further requests to government to support the outreach program that Open Arms is trying to establish?
Through you, Mayor Corcom, to councillor MacPherson. So during our discussions with the MLAs a number of weeks ago, we were asked or directed that we could speak with the Department of... Can't remember what they're called now. Opportunity and Social something? So we haven't received the contact information for that organization. I have asked again to the assistants that we can get that. And again, the province does fund Open Arms as well as other organizations in the area, but that was basically the direction they provided us, is to speak with the government department that's responsible.
Councillor Hiltz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Just wondering, so that $32,800 for the Last That Housing project, do they have a deadline, like when money is provided? Do they provide us with the deadline or vice versa? And if I may, also... Actually, no, I'll stick with that question for now, please.
Through you, Mayor Corcom, to councillor Hiltz. Yes, with our grants program, there is a timeframe that funds are to be used. I believe it's two years. So with that, again, which is why we... And usually every year, they need to provide an update if they haven't done anything yet, so which was why we reached out to see where they are with that project.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lutz.
Thank you. Just, you noted that the $50,000 is sort of the threshold for... Or through you, mayor, sorry. You noted that the threshold where, you know, we exceed $50,000 for capital. Had the ask been $49,000, would the approach of staff been any different in terms of the ability to find alternative ways of funding this ask?
Through you, Mayor Corcom, to the councillor. Usually, I mean, again, any nonprofit request that we receive without other direction from council would be directed to the grants policy.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Peckford.
Thank you, through you. Has Open Arms provided a breakdown on how this funding will be used, such as how much is going towards salaries, winter clothing, other necessary resources?
Through you, Mayor Corcom, to the deputy mayor. Certainly, in the proposal that they sent, which was given to you at the... Back in January at that council meeting, there's more breakdown as to where the funds are going. Some of it is staffing for outreach, and then there's some related to... I don't have it in front of me, but some related to location for their drop-in center. It's about half and half.
Councillor Lutz.
Thank you, mayor. So just in terms of proceeding, my preference would be when you're ready for a motion to do the alternative motion, which is we direct staff to look at funding an alternative source for... In an alternative way, I guess, less than $50,000 if that's our capital threshold. So it was on the previous slide before this recommendation. So when you're ready for a motion, I'd make that one. Cool.
We have a recommendation in front of you. Does any member of council wish to move that recommendation? Counselor Sappington, and we have a seconder. And Counselor Best. So I guess the Counselor Lutz, if you wanted to make a motion, you'd have to make an amendment to this motion, if that's what you would like to do. So Counselor Lutz.
Thanks, Mayor. I think the motion's been moved and seconded. At this point, I'll just speak against it and say, I feel, as a municipality, we have the capacity to award this request, a request of some kind, to solve a community problem that, while not our direct responsibility, we intervene in numerous occasions when nonprofit organizations in our county step up to fill a gap, where the health department falls short, where the education department falls short. We often fund community groups, like the Valley Community Learning Association, like Brigadoons Camp Society, like the Valley Hospital Foundation, to be a partner to fill the gaps. And so I don't believe that this motion is the correct way to proceed, because we're essentially asking them to wait in the dead of winter for support in helping folks who are housed in our community. So I will be voting against this motion. I encourage council to defeat this motion, and should the motion get defeated, I would make a motion of the alternative, alternative recommended motion that was put forth in the previous.
Thank you. Questions being called for. Just a minute. I've got a Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. Sorry for the late button there to speak. The issue here evidently is the urgency of time and the fact that if we recommend and move this towards the grant program, it's going to take some time to deal with it. I'm cognizant of the fact that we need to be careful not to take on responsibilities that don't fall under municipal government. And I think it's quite clear here that housing falls specifically under the provincial government, and I think that's part of the issue that we're dealing with here. I think it's quite clear that we all understand the urgency of people who are living rough, and in particular, days like today, and this has been a harsh winter. And I think that we would agree that, as human beings, we certainly want to provide support and to ensure that people are surviving through this harsh winter. That said, by no means do I think we're in a position to undertake the responsibilities of provincial government. But Counselor Lutz may have a point, and the point may be that, you know, we are now mid-February. We're probably looking at about six weeks of harsh weather, and maybe we need to be looking at some alternative pathway that would allow us to support people living rough in our communities over the next six weeks. And then the jurisdiction needs to lie where it should be, back with provincial government. Thus, my question at the beginning of Deputy C A O's presentation has been an update on response from provincial government, because it is their responsibility. It's not our responsibility. But we see ourselves in the position, based on a harsh winter, where we need to be making some humane decisions. Therefore, I'm not opposed to the idea of Counselor Lutz. Thank you.
Counselor Sappington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know that we're talking about a lot of money, but on Saturday, on behalf of the New Minas Volunteer Fire Department in auxiliary, my husband and I delivered-
Point of order. We're not debating on giving the money request.
Sure.
You need to speak on the recommendation of staff, whether you're for or against it, and if that doesn't pass, then maybe something else.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I too agree that there's an urgency, so I'm against it.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? No. Questions being called for. All those in favor or against the recommendation, please press your button. Motion carried. All right. We shall now move on to regional recreation complex. I guess Deputy C A O Frost is up again.
So again, this morning, we'll be talking about the regional recreation complex and the economic impacts and the next steps, and myself and Christine Spur, our business development analyst, will be speaking to these points this morning. So first of all, on the regional rec complex, I'd just like to remind council that our current discussion and everything we talk about today is related to what is in our consultant's report, which speaks to an aquatic center, a gymnasium, and with community space, and that is the basis of the economic impact study that worked that Christine has completed and what we'll be talking about specifically. So today, we're going to talk, Christine will talk about the economic impact work that she's put together, and then we'll talk a little bit about decision points and community discussions after her piece. So with that, I'll hand it over to Christine to talk about the economic impact of complex.
Good morning. So yes, I have done some work on the economic impacts of the regional recreation complex here in Kings County. There we go. All right. So the purpose of this analysis is to provide an estimate of the potential economic impacts that would be created from the construction and ongoing operation of a regional recreation complex, as envisioned in the Kings County Regional Recreation Center feasibility study, Phase One report, that was completed in November of two thousand twenty-two and presented to a joint session of council in March of two thousand twenty-three. So in completing this analysis, I reviewed more than a dozen economic impact studies completed on several topics, including the economic impacts of defense spending, the ongoing operation of military bases, the costs and benefits of rail trails, and assessing the incremental economic impacts of new and renovated recreational facilities. I also gathered localized information and spoke with subject matter experts. So Appendix D of the feasibility study discusses the economic impact potential of a regional recreation facility, and it goes into a fair bit of detail, but I just wanted to quote one part in particular. So there are a number of ways in which a major investment in public infrastructure creates lasting impacts. These go beyond the short-term construction impact and include a range of longer-term benefits. Chief among these is the ability of new, modern public facilities to become demand generators for visitors, creating opportunities for additional economic activity in support of local businesses. Yet it is the role of new investment in signaling the advantages of locational advantages of the region that likely have the greatest impact. Access to new state-of-the-art facilities maintains and enhances quality of life, offers reputational benefits, and becomes part of the economic development appeal of the area. So the feasibility study includes a chart, which illustrates how facility operations create impact, and I also included that chart in the report in your agenda package. It breaks the economic impact down into five key areas, which I've shown on screen here: construction, operations, off-site spending, property gains, and qualitative impacts. So the feasibility study focuses on the qualitative impacts, including, and this is just in the order that they're presented in the study, private investment stimulus, generating incremental tax revenues, attracting younger people and families with children to move and stay in the region, promoting active living, supporting inclusion and access, and enhancing recreation capacity and encouraging recreation through the built, natural, and social environments. The economics, the feasibility study also provides estimates of the off-site economic impacts of three potential events that could be held at a regional recreation complex. Those were a youth basketball event, a regional swim meet, and a provincial basketball tournament. So where the feasibility study covered the qualitative and off-site impacts well, my analysis has focused on estimating the economic impacts from the construction and ongoing operation of a regional recreation complex, as well as looking at potential property gains. So to do that, I have done some economic impact modeling. So the gold standard for economic impact modeling is evaluating economic impact through input-output models or other methods that require comprehensive surveys of the local economy. Unfortunately, Statistics Canada only produces these at the national and provincial levels. So in the absence of those surveys, the most accurate approach for estimating local economic impacts is to use the economic base multiplier, which is estimated as a ratio of total regional income or employment to the income or employment in exporting sectors. And I've done that using location quotients. I apologize in advance. I was trying to avoid putting this slide in the PowerPoint, but it was kind of unavoidable. But basically, the location quotient compares the proportion of employment in an industry to, in the local economy, with the proportion of employment in that same industry in a larger benchmark economy. So in this case, Nova Scotia. So for example, looking at my table there, the very top line is the agriculture, forestry, fishing, and hunting industries. Of course, agriculture is quite important to the Kings County economy, and you can see, as of the last census, five point five percent of people employed in Kings County worked in that agriculture, forestry, fishing, and hunting sector, compared to three point seven percent of people in Nova Scotia overall. So basically, five point five divided by three point seven gives you that location quotient for that sector of one point four nine. So the location quotient for a local industry can be greater than one, less than one, or exactly one. If it's exactly one, then the industry is viewed as perfectly meeting the needs of the local economy. That is to say that there are exactly as many people employed in that industry in the local economy as the local economy needs. If it's less than one, then the local industry isn't meeting the needs of the local economy, and goods or services are being imported to satisfy local demand. If it's greater than one, then the local industry is seen to be exceeding the needs of the local economy, and the excess goods or services that are being produced are being exported. So using data from the two thousand twenty-one census, seven industries, highlighted in green there, employ a greater percentage of the workforce in Kings County than in Nova Scotia overall. And together, those seven industries employ sixty-six point one percent of the workforce in Kings County. So then we move on to the income multiplier. So the income multiplier is an estimate of how much money is retained and respent in the local economy for every dollar initially injected. So I did bore you with the location quotient, so this one, I've used some pictures. So for example, I just spent a hundred dollars on a new pair of shoes that I am wearing today. Let's say I bought the shoes from Ann. My hundred dollars has been injected into the local economy. Ann takes my hundred dollars, remits the appropriate sales taxes, and is left with eighty-five dollars. Ann spends forty dollars on Amazon and uses the other forty-five dollars to go out to dinner at Billy's diner. The forty dollars Ann spent on Amazon has left the local economy, but the remaining forty-five has been respent in the local economy. So Billy, with his coffee there, takes the forty-five dollars, remits the appropriate sales taxes, and is left with thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Billy uses eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents of that to pay his suppliers in Halifax, and he pays Claudia, his cook, twenty dollars. So let's say Claudia sets aside five dollars for income taxes and is left with fifteen dollars. Claudia takes a trip to Moncton, maybe not today, but stops at breakfast here, Tim Hortons here in Coldbrook first. She spends eight dollars in Coldbrook and buys a seven-dollar coffee at Starbucks in Moncton. So this pattern continues on and on, with some percentage of every dollar of income being spent in the local economy and some percentage leaving the local economy through spending or taxes. So this example of Ann's original hundred dollars of income, Billy got forty-five, Claudia got twenty, and Tim Hortons got eight. So seventy-three dollars was retained and respent in the local economy, forty-five plus twenty plus eight. So the income multiplier for this local economy would be one point seven three. So since we can't trace every dollar through the local economy, we need to find another way to approximate the income retained in the economy. If we assume that there is a relationship between employment and income, we could use the percentage of employment in industries that are meeting or exceeding local demand or exporting as an estimate of the income being retained in the local economy. The assumption is being that because those industries can meet local demand, that they are filling the local demand first. So to make that estimate, we need to see how many times that sixty-six point one percent of people employed in those seven industries in Kings County goes into one. So dividing one by zero point six six one gets a multiplier of one point five one two nine and on. So that is to say, of the hundred dollars that I gave to Ann for shoes, which was Ann's original income, fifty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents would be retained as income by Billy, Claudia, and Tim Hortons, and the total income in the economy would be a hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. So we can then use the income multiplier to calculate the employment multiplier, which is used to estimate the number of jobs that would be supported in the local economy by the ongoing operations of the facility. So to do this, we also need the average income per period for the facility, the average income per period in Kings County. So the feasibility study gives an estimation of the annual wage expense for a regional recreation complex. It was just over six hundred and seventy-nine thousand in the first full year of operations. The study also provides an example of a staffing model, you can see on the screen here, that could be used for the facility. So using an assumption that the facility would have an operating schedule of a hundred and twelve hours per week, gives a minimum staffing complement of twenty full-time equivalent positions. Now, it is possible and quite common for one full-time equivalent position to be filled by multiple people working part-time. So for example, one person working twenty hours per week and one working seventeen point five. Those two employees combined would be considered to be working one full-time equivalent position. Also, the exact staffing composition of a regional recreation facility will depend on the operational needs of the facility, which will in turn depend on the types of amenities and programming offered. But if we take the twenty positions identified here, and we divide that into the six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, thereabouts, annual wages, we would get an average annual income of just under thirty-four thousand dollars for the facility per full-time equivalent position. And again, this is the average. Some positions, such as the general manager, would likely make more, while other positions might make less. So as reported in the two thousand twenty-one census, the average annual income in Kings County was thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. So the thirty-four thousand is just over eighty-seven percent of that. So if we multiply that eighty-seven percent by the point five one two nine for the income multiplier, we get an estimate of the number of additional full-time equivalent positions in the local economy, supported by each full-time equivalent position at the regional recreation complex. It's point four four seven five, so just under half. So we could take that and get the estimated economic impact of operations by multiplying the annual wage expense by that income multiplier. We talked about a couple of slides ago. So for the first full year of operations, that's estimated to be just over a million dollars. The feasibility study estimated that expenses, including wage expenses, would increase by three percent per year. So this increase would be reflected in the estimated annual impact in subsequent years. That's why it's growing every year. There would be at least twenty-nine full-time equivalent positions created, twenty at the facility, using the model from the feasibility study, and nine indirectly supported in the local economy. Technically, all operational expenses would have economic impacts to the local economy. However, only the finances- However, only the finances, expenses financed by non-residents would be considered to be incremental impact to the Kings County economy. And since we don't have an estimate of the amount of expenses that would be financed by non-residents, for simplicity's sake, I've used the annual wage expense to represent the portion of expenses that could be incremental to the Kings County economy. In front of the feasibility study, the annual wage expense is estimated to be less than half of the total annual expenses of the facility. So the same caveat would apply to the economic impacts of construction. In general, economic impact assessments only consider the money brought in from outside the study area. So for the purposes of my analysis, it's been assumed that $30 million in external funding will be used. That number needs to be adjusted for leakages, so that is the proportion of the money that never enters the local economy. Most leakages take the form of either non-local spending or taxes. So the $30 million in this case has had the 15% HST rate backed out to approximate those leakages, and that leaves estimated total construction expenditures into the Kings County economy of $26 million. The multiplying to 26 million by that income multiplier gives total spending generated from construction of $39.5 billion. And based on studies done for other projects of the area, it is estimated the total income in the local economy would be around 39% of the total spending generated from construction, or about $15.3 million. And using that average income in Kings County, that would translate into 392 full-time equivalent jobs supported by the construction phase of the facility. So the annual operations of the facility are estimated to have an economic impact of about $1 million for the first year, based on an annual wage investment of about $679,000. To get the annual impact in future years, an annual escalation of costs would be applied into the year-one estimate, and compounded annually for the lifetime of the facility. So in this case, we've used a conservative estimate of a 40-year lifespan for the facility, which would give a total lifetime impact of the operations of the facility to be about $77.5 million. Bringing that back to today's dollars, that would be about $23,750,000. Adding the estimated impact from construction of $39.5 million gives an estimated total economic impact from construction operations of just under $117 million, or $63.2 million in today's dollars. The combined impacts would also include the impacts from special events. And again, the feasibility study provides estimates for three potential events. The impacts of these events would go above and beyond the impacts attributable to the construction and regular operation of the facility. And the kinds and sizes of events that could be held at the facility are highly dependent on the amenities that are included in the facility. Analysis beyond what is included in the feasibility study would be more appropriate to be done at the detailed design and business planning phases. And finally, major infrastructure investments are known to stimulate private investment in a local economy. However, due to the breadth of possibilities for investment that could come from the private sector, it is difficult to provide an estimate of the economic impacts of private investment at this time. And with that, I'm going to invite Rob back up to talk about the next steps.
Christine. So what we're going to discuss now is a little bit about the next steps on our regional rec complex. So because this project has spanned councils, I'll just, a quick reminder that, you know, we, we received this report back in 2022, have been working on additional next steps, and, you know, we're to a point where we need to decide on how to proceed. The, the way that we're presenting it to you today is that we're going to go through in kind of a phased approach to our decision-making. And the first decision point will be related to land. This step would be, is needed to finalize partners. So until we know where it is, we don't, we won't know exactly who's in and, and what the certain design components would be based on location, because location will have an effect on what that will look like. It will assist with community conversations. So again, once we have some direction from council, we can start to have more of those community conversations, and it would also encourage future development once that land is determined. So of course, because of the land discussion, we will be having discussions in the near future, which will occur in camera due to the nature of the confidential nature. The second decision point would be to proceed with the build and what that would look like exactly. So the decision point would obviously have certain parameters in place, so we're not just going to say, let's build it. We're going to say, we would build it, this is what it will look like, this is what the parameters would be. So obviously, cost would be an important factor in that. So just as an example, not to, to lead you at all, but council may decide that they are willing to put in X amount of dollars or X amount or percentage of the, of the build, which again would give us license to go out and figure out where the rest may come from. It allows for discussion on the partners, and of course, the external funders that we'll need to have a discussion with from other levels of government and community. And then the final decision point, of course, would be our final decision on funding. Once we have parameters in place from step two, then we would look to figure out exactly how the municipality would fund our portion. And again, we know that there's numerous options that we can discuss, and, and we would have those discussions at that time. So just to put it in a bit of a graphic for you, we have a land discussion. If we can't agree on the land discussion, then, you know, we either have to do, we'll take direction from council, but it'll either be further work, or we will proceed with, to the next step, to the next decision point, or of course, the project may stop. The second decision point would be the project build. Same thing, we'd take direction from council. We would either proceed to the next step on that and begin that process, or again, if council wishes not to proceed, the project would stop. Then we would move on to the financing discussion, and, and with that, we'd take direction from council, and if we had approval, then we would proceed to attend or, and build, or, however we would do that, whether it's design-build or design and then build. And if we can't agree on, on the financing portion, then the project would stop. Once we have a few more decisions in place, then we can do, go out in the community and have further discussion as to what it is that we can do and what's possible with the resources that we have. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we have a recommendation to receive the briefing, and I'm certainly open to questions or comments.
Great. Thank you, Rob and Christine. Do we have any member of council has any questions to the presenter? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to our Deputy Cao. Do we know how many phases we plan on in this project, or is that too early to ask?
In the, in the report, I mean, the report is based on phase one. All the detail in the report is a phase one. There was a phase two discussed in the report, but that's, you know, in all the discussions that councils have had, it's, we would only proceed at certain points after other things happen in the community. So the three councils that have been involved to date have basically said that that's a decision that would happen down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Can you give us an approximate timeline, Rob, from the blocks that you had there, from beginning to the end?
That's, it's, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor, it's a bit hard to say precisely when you're talking about, obviously, land negotiations. You know, that will happen as quick as we get direction on, and then the same with any other step in this process. Certainly, the land discussions will be happening relatively soon. I can't say exactly when, but within the next month, I would say. And then depending on how those conversations go, will depend on the, the next decision point, and, and the same with the following one. So we can't really get one done until we get the first one done.
Counselor Hiltz.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. The original vision, I guess, so a couple of councils ago, was it for the municipality to fully operate this, to fully fund it? Or is there talk, or was there talk about having like a society, community, an organization-led sort of, I think with the exception of Kenful, I think all the arenas, you've got the, what, the credit union soccer, you know, that's all ran by organizations, of course. Very important to have the public, you know, that autonomy piece. So just wondering what the original vision was. Thanks.
Through you, Mayor Corcoran, to the Counselor. Certainly, the, the discussion and the recommendation in the report is that it would be a municipally-owned and operated facility. It's, it's a little bit different when you get into Aquatics Center, as, you know, I know a lot of people in the room are vastly interested in that it's a very different piece to operate than, than other facilities in the, in the county.
Thank you. Thank you, and, and that part probably would come a little later on, too, during the financing part of it. Deputy Mayor Packford.
Thank you, through you. Through the feasibility study, has there been any talk about costs for running this facility above and beyond wages? So I know Acadia had mentioned their pool, they're running a deficit each year of around $400,000. Is there an idea how much it would cost for power, insurance, upkeep, maintenance? Has that been researched? I know it's a lot of variables at this point, but is there a rough idea how much that would add on to the wages?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Deputy Mayor, there's certainly a, a good part of the, the report that talks to the operations, so. I don't have the first number off the top of my head, Deputy Mayor, but, you know, the operations itself will cost in the neighborhood of $2 million for sure, with revenue probably matching about half of that. So certainly, there, you know, I guess you can look at it as two ways. It's either an investment in recreation or a deficit, depending on how you look at it. But it was just under $700,000, I think, for the first year of operations.
Thank you. If I could have a follow-up?
Sure.
So as has been discussed, one of the, the holdups on potentially moving ahead with this would be land negotiations, figuring out a where and figuring how much it might cost if we had to purchase land. If we were able to work out on a piece of land that we could negotiate terms with a municipality that may already own said piece of land, would we be able to move this process ahead? I know it's many years it would be before we might have this facility, but if we were able to, say, work into an existing structure such as Newmanus's Louis Mallett Center, would we be able to potentially expedite this for those who are looking to have a pool? We already have the infrastructure there, we already have parking there, water and sewer. If we were to move towards researching something like this, would we potentially be able to accomplish this task faster for our community?
Through you, Mayor Corcoran, to Deputy Mayor. So certainly in the, in the report, it speaks to, in the private report, it speaks to many different land options. So again, and as has been presented to this council in camera regarding land, which, so I won't go into too much detail, but there's, there's benefits and negatives to basically every piece of land that's been, been looked at. So, you know, some of them, some pieces of land, it's easier to do stuff, of course, but there's also other considerations that need to come into place.
Counselor Sappington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When we talk about the cost of maintaining such a facility, it would be equivalent to the costs that it requires to maintain roads, correct? Because it is a community need for community wellness. And then because our presentation was about economic development, the last time you spoke here, and we were discussing this, Mr. Frost, you said that quite often, a facility like this, other municipalities go ahead and build a business district right along with it because of the development that it causes. May I ask, do we currently have phone calls about available office space from potential franchises and startups that we have to turn down because we simply don't have that startup
Through you, Mayor Corcoran, to the Counselor. Certainly, the, you know, a lot of, a lot of that business development or economic development would probably start with the Valley Regional Enterprise Network. But certainly, we know that we, either through the REN or directly to Christine, we do hear of organizations looking for space, usually land, so it's not so much, you know, office space, but it is looking for areas that they could develop a business. And there's not a lot available in Kings County, to be perfectly blunt.
Counselor Best.
Thank you, Mayor. Through to Rob. As we're all aware, that First Nation, Napples Valley First Nation is going to do some expanding down there off the highway. Is there any consideration, maybe talk to the First Nation and see where this could go? They're going to have, they're looking at hotels and everything else there. They got 250 acres of land there, which is a big piece of land, come right off the highway. I would recommend that when we start looking at land, maybe look at the First Nation, too, because down the First Nation, they don't have to have ball laws or anything else, they can build what they want on the native land there. So, thank you.
Through you, Mayor Corcoran, to Counselor Best. We, we have had some discussions with the ABFN about their future development and that type of things.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote in favor or against. I remind council, you're not voting to approve this at this point in time. All you're, would be voting to receive that so that we go to the next step to talk about land. So all those in favor of the recommendation or against, please press your button. Oh, yeah. All right, moved by Counselor Best, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Trying to move her forward fast. Motion carried, okay. All right. Well, the audience approves, anyway.
[laughter]
All right, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, is the board and committee reports. Valley Regional Enterprise Network Liaison. And my report was presented to you before, unless you have any questions. No questions? Would somebody like to move receipt of that report? Please, moved by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried. Is there any committees of council, anyone would like to do a verbal report? No, we don't have no verbal reports, then we will move on to external boards and committees. Are there any verbal reports from any external boards and committees that any member of council has been on? No? Okay, we'll move on. The correspondence. we have a aerial spraying council motion to Premier and Minister Hellman. The letter was set in accordance with the motion a previous council passed on October 1st, 2024, and copy is sent to Nova Scotia FC, FM. somebody like to move that? Moved by Counselor McPherson, second by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. We all. We also received a letter from SWIM Nova Scotia in support of the regional recreation facility for information. And can I get a motion to receive for correspondence? Moved by councillor Lutz, second by councillor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Councillor Lutz, do I miss you on something here?
I just wanted to briefly say, I thought the proposal for 50 versus 25 was interesting. That was referenced in the letter, and I currently have no concept about the difference between those. So I was curious if when we go through this process, it would be, if this is something staff would be considering, the two sizes, I guess, and if that was going to be part of the conversation. So that was all just a note that I'd like to see some discussion around that.
I'm sure the staff will look at everything that's available. All right, we'll move on to new council orientations, active transportation. And Ashley Broker on Trails Parks, an active transportation coordinator.
Good morning, mayor and council. So as mentioned, today we are going to be discussing some items relating to active transportation infrastructure. So we're going to be discussing the policies that we have relating to various types of active transportation infrastructure, specifically our active transportation, which might be referenced as AT throughout the presentation. So I just wanted to note that first. Sidewalks, crosswalks, streetlights, policy and bylaws. And a little note on our trails. These policies enable people to actively get to where they live, work, learn and play, not only within their communities, but between communities, for recreational and utilitarian purposes. As a reminder, today is not about debate of the policies and their contents, but it is about becoming oriented within the process that we have to enforce the policies. A little bit of a background. In July of 2021, Active Kings County was accepted by municipal council, which is the active transportation plan for the municipality of the County of Kings. Active transportation is any human form of non-motorized travel, such as walking, cycling, utilizing a wheelchair, jogging, skateboarding, cross-country skiing, et cetera. Active modes of transportation could include on-road facilities, such as paved shoulders, shared roads, some sidewalks and bike lanes, as well as off-road facilities such as trails, et cetera. The active transportation plan is utilized as a guide in our decision-making process for implementation of advancing these quality, accessible and inclusive AT opportunities within Kings County. It is approximately a 15- to 20-year plan with the following guiding principles. So we want to improve regional connections, so community to community, expansion of local connections, so within our communities, create welcoming spaces. We wanted to prioritize safety, make it easy and intuitive to navigate, reframe transportation values and support community resiliency. Within the report, it was then broken down to approximately 120 recommendations, 12 relating to a regional network. So if we think of Kings County as a spine, that would kind of be like our tree trunk. Some inter-community connections, so then those would be our branches and our twigs along our tree, and some overall improvements, some infrastructure and amenities, education programming, marketing and promotions. And those can all be found on our municipal website. We'd be happy to share a link to the plan if you would like to see it afterwards. One of the things that came about of this project is recognizing as at that time, those were the recommendations that we had, but we know that the landscape of active transportation is ever-changing. So we wanted to make sure that we were able to develop some sort of a policy or a decision-making guideline that we could score projects that were previously identified against new projects that could come into existence. So we had a same baseline to score off of. So of that, the active transportation project prioritization policy was created, EPW-04-015. So this prioritization policy aims to enhance the physical and mental health, reduction of carbon emissions boosts local businesses by developing that AT network. The policy is a framework to prioritize this, and it includes a triple bottom line approach where we equally weight social criteria, which could include a variety of items such as accessibility, diversity, inclusion, community demand, et cetera. It could also include some environmental considerations. So looking at not just the built environment of where that particular piece of infrastructure might be, but what also is happening kind of around the physical environment of those items, and some financial impacts as well. So what are the upfront costs? Are there additional grants? And other things, too, of, is there additional roadwork or underground work that's happening? So for example, we know that in Canning, the sewer line is being replaced, water line. Well, when those things get built, can we build our AT items back up to a different standard versus having to go back later and fix it? So those are things are all taken into consideration. One of the really key things with this is that because we don't own the majority of the roads within our communities, we do require approval from the local road authority, which in our case is Nova Scotia Department of Public Works. Our sidewalk construction project prioritization, EPW-04-014, is very similar. So this one is just looking at the sidewalks. We separated out the active transportation pieces and the sidewalk pieces because naturally the scope and the scale is going to be very different. So especially when we score some of the items around accessibility and safety, we know that a sidewalk is going to be safer than a paved shoulder, but it might not always be the most realistic piece in that community. So this, again, is very similar. There's social, environmental, financial criterias that we score. A really big emphasis on this one is within school zones, too, and which we define school zones as a three-kilometer radius from the school, which exceeds provincial transportation guidelines. Projects, again, as I kind of referenced earlier, with that overlapping infrastructure or road repaving in conjunction with Nova Scotia Department of Public Works, might be bumped up on a list in order to capitalize on those items. And again, because we don't own all of our roads that the projects might be happening on, it does require approval from NSDPW. Our crosswalk prioritization and installation policy is quite similar. So it outlines a criteria for prioritizing new crosswalk installations to enhance active transportation within our communities. Again, that framework still exists because we know that it's great to build infrastructure, but if they can't get between infrastructure by crossing a road, then that's something that we need to kind of look in. Sometimes they happen together, sometimes they're a little bit separately. So it all depends on the design of the project that we are looking on. And once again, approval from NSDPW is very important within this. So in terms of what does this look like, how do these actually get in place? First, there would be some sort of an identification of a need that could come in from residents, community groups, council, staff observations, municipal plans. So the submit, the request would then get submitted to staff, who would specify location, reasoning. There might be other supporting evidence that is included, whether it be traffic counts, photos, petitions, safety concerns, et cetera. And then staff would log this and look to score it when we look at the prioritization list every year. Staff review the, a variety of different items when we go through it, but there is a rubric that we follow when we do our scoring. And then it might get added to the list. So one of the really big things is sometimes the feasibility of different items throughout our communities, because, yes, we all want large sidewalks, well-connected network, but we do know there is that financial cost, so how can we phase that to be appropriate? From there, it then would get added to the priority list, hopefully. If the project is going to go ahead, it would be included in annual budget allocations for review and consideration. And then the next steps would be the design and the approval. So design would not only go through some of our engineering firms that we have contracted to do the design of these infrastructures, but also approval from NSDPW on the design as well, making sure it meets their standards and their specifications that they have. From there, we would look to go on to the construction and the monitoring. Generally, the municipality is responsible for the construction of and the monitoring and the evaluation of those assets afterwards. The next item that we wanted to just provide a little bit of an overview on is our streetlight bylaw. So the streetlight bylaw governs the installation and maintenance of street lighting. It is a bylaw because there is an item that is added on, there's financial considerations, where it's added on to people within the designated areas, called Schedule A of the bylaw. There are tax bills every year, and we do a blended approach. So I believe this year it was $43 for streetlights, if it's outside of your home there. And again, that's a blended model. And that is determined by the fee policy, which is a finance policy, and I can't remember the exact number right now. We do have a procedure, though, for requesting new streetlights, and it kind of comes through like this. So the request comes in, there is a form of application that gets submitted to the municipal clerk and then passed directly on to other staff. Or sometimes what happens if they don't, they just send an email, we then have to direct them to this bylaw. We ask them to complete the form, we review it, so that our review comes into where is it? What are some of the criteria that has to meet? And also then, we often will have to send out one of our GIS folks to prepare a map, and sometimes that includes mapping the utility poles within that area, so we have an idea as to what is already existing in that area. Then what we have to do is because it would change, it would be a fee added on, we have to do a petition mail-out so that folks within 100 feet of that streetlight or multiple streetlights within dwellings, so we need a 50% plus one agreement. So if we don't come back from that petition and if it fails, then it kind of gets scratched there. If it comes back, that 51, 50 plus one are in agreement for it, then what happens is staff makes a recommendation to council to have that area be added to Schedule A. So it's only the residents in Schedule A that were able to, I guess, tax on that or add that additional piece on. So really, what we're looking for is it's a petition to join Schedule A, and then that's how that would come through, and it would come to council then for further approval. So as a quick overview, the policies and processes exist for when requests come in. We try to collaborate with other entities when possible, and most items do require approval from transportation authorities, meaning NSDPW. The other key thing to highlight is that villages are responsible mostly for their own assets. A quick note on trails, because oftentimes AT and trails can link together, but sometimes they can be really separate. So generally, we have different types of trails. One might be a recreational trail versus a utilitarian trail. And a recreational trail and a utilitarian, ooh, utilitarian trail can be the same. Example would be the Harvest Moon Trail. So people can use that for recreation purposes. They can also use it for utilitarian purposes where they're trying to get between communities. But an example such as the Black Rock Trails is probably more of a recreational trail system that we would have, or White Rock, because you're not connecting to another piece, but it is great for connection for social reasons and to nature. When looking at the Harvest Moon Trail, that would be the largest piece that we would oversee for our trail system. It spans about 110 kilometers from Grand Prairie to Annapolis Royal. 55 kilometers are in Kings County with six managing bodies. We oversee approximately 14 kilometers of that, and we have an extension coming for the 2025-26 construction season that's looking to expand it easterly another 2.14 kilometers. The other trail systems that we have that we don't directly oversee, we provide support through the community grants program, and I know that Amy has provided an overview there. But the support that we are able to provide to other entities are included within that. The recommendation is that community, the whole, receive the presentation for information purposes, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ashley. And any questions to Ashley on her report? Councillor Gates.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to guess that all new streetlights must be LED.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor. I just really give out the petition side of it. I'm going to defer that to Director Kerrigan if he has other answers for that. But we haven't come across that since I've been in, so.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We order the streetlights through Nova Scotia Power, so it would never be their standard, but I believe they are all LED.
Thank you. Councillor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Thank you, Ashley, for a very informative presentation. You referred a few times to as requests come in, as requests come in, whether it was for the AT policy or for the streetlight policy. I was just wondering, is there an online form on our website? How would a citizen make a request come in?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor. Certainly, for the streetlight one, there is a form that has to get processed, and that is included within the bylaw. I think it's page five of the bylaw specifically. For other items, we don't necessarily have a standardized form. Certainly, though, if they do submit an inquiry through the website, that's one way that we can look to track it. But also, we have had requests come through council and redirected to staff. It has come through Yanni in the past, as well as the clerk, or they have come directly to staff as well. So there are a variety of different ways that folks can reach out. We don't have that standardized process as of yet or in terms of a form, but certainly there would be questions that staff would have, because it really is a case-by-case basis.
I have a question. If we wanted to put a crosswalk in, or maybe the citizens would like one, I presume, and I guess my question is, that we definitely have to have Department of Transportation and/or policing on-site other than it could be, the public may want it, but it may be on a dangerous turn or something along that line. Is that correct? They have to sign off before we could ever put a sidewalk, even if the public would like one there?
Yes. On provincial roads, we do need approval from the Department of Public Works. When it's our own municipal roads, we act as the road authority, so we have a little bit more flexibility there where we may not. But certainly, on provincial roads, we do require approval from the transportation authority.
Okay. All right, it's time. Would somebody like to move the recommendation? Moved by Deputy Mayor Peckford, second by councillor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Thank you. Motion carried, and now procurement. Kristy Taylor.
Good morning. My name is Kristy Taylor, and I'm the procurement specialist here at the municipality. I'm going to take you through a little walkthrough for procurement here at Kings. I'm also going to apologize, I had jaw surgery just before Christmas, so this is one of the first few times that I'm actually speaking publicly. So I might sound a little odd, but just bear with me. So what are we talking about when we're talking about procurement at Kings? So essentially, just for a very high-level overview, we're talking about the purchase of goods, services and construction for use by the municipality. We're talking consultants, vehicles, software, engineering services, banking. There are many different descriptions, different items that we purchase, but that's some highlighted ones there for you. Who's involved in procurement at the municipality? So all functions of the municipality play a role in procurement. There are various levels, depending on the dollar value of spend that is being There are various levels depending on the dollar value of spend that is being taken that will dictate who exactly needs to be involved in that procurement process. Generally speaking, if it's a lower dollar value, then the department itself can manage that procurement. Once it hits what we call a higher-value procurement, so that's ten thousand dollars plus, that's typically when I get involved. So, the role of the procurement officer was created in 2022 and filled in 2023 by myself. The role is designed to organize, manage, finalize open procurement events, so those are the RFPs, tenders, and various other events that we use through our procurement process. I advance and adapt procurement policy and processes. I educate, train, support staff at all levels with all procurement activities. So, again, even if it doesn't fall into a high-dollar value threshold that I'm become more intimately involved with with the procurement, I'm still always available to help out if it's a lower dollar value and people need some assistance. I also deal with some contract management. There are some contracts that I manage myself, and then I also assist with other directors and managers if they need some assistance or some guidance that I can support with their contracts, too. I help that out. And I also work with vendor community and try to help build and establish some of those relationships as well. Procurement has a lot of rules to follow. There's legislation involved, there are laws pertaining to public procurement. Sometimes you'll hear things talking about Contract A and Contract B. That is, that's all terminology used in public procurement in Canada. There are trade agreements, there are several to list. The main ones that we deal with, though, are the Canadian Free Trade Agreement, CTFA, and the CETA, which is Comprehensive Economic Trade Agreement with European Union. Again, there are many others as well. These are just two of the typical ones that we fall into, and there are a lot of rules associated with those trade agreements that dictate different spending, different requirements depending on the dollar of spend that is happening, how long the procurement event needs to be publicized, things like that. Then we have the Procurement Act of Nova Scotia and a recently updated procurement, public procurement policy of Nova Scotia. If you've, if you're a procurement nerd, I don't know how many of those there are, but if you are, you might know that as a sustainable procurement policy. It's been updated and changed as of December, I believe, and named the Public Procurement Policy of Nova Scotia. And then our own policy for the municipality, which is FIN-05-006. We utilize a variety of different types of procurement events to try to maintain the best overall value for what it is that we're purchasing. So, we have RFTs, which are also known as tenders, RFPs, Requests for Proposals, Requests for Quotes, NRFP, which is what's called a non-binding Request for Proposals, RFSQ, Requests for Supplier Qualifications. We use those primarily if we're trying to understand what's available in the market or if we're trying to establish sometimes the beginning of a standing offer. Again, if we want to know who, what is available in the market and what their capabilities are, sometimes we utilize an RFSQ. And then there are ALTPs, which are new and have kind of, are generally guided by information that the province releases. Those are alternative procurement practices. Basically, a kind of an envelope word to describe reasons why you might have to step outside of typical procurement processes. So, an emergency situation might be a good example, things of that nature. Our general process for procurement, just wanted to kind of let you know what the process is, because I'm sure there's been many questions. Procurement events are largely driven by projects identified in the annual budget. So, each department will identify kind of projects and needs that they think that they would like to tackle for the next year. They will bring them to you, you will approve those or not approve them. And out of those projects that have been identified within the budget, there will be either one or typically a series of procurement events that need to happen in order to support that project. The procurement officer works with leadership and staff to build the procurement event itself. There are many different types of procurements that we do here. I'm not an expert in all of them, so I do rely on our staff to try to help fill in some of the technical requirements. So, they help develop what is called the scope of work, and then I help build that and ask questions and elaborate on that a little bit, and then we put it into one of our typically-designed templates and alter that as needed as well. From there, we utilize something called bids and tenders. Bids and tenders is an e-procurement tool, which we use to manage the procurement event and process. So, instead of having to receive submissions via email or different ways, that way it can all flow through bids and tenders. That helps to manage the event, ensure that nothing is opened before it should be opened. A nice thing that bids and tenders does is it allows us to actually create plan takers' lists, too, which we just weren't able to do before. So, we know who is interested in the event, who might be submitting. It also allows when we have addenda that need to be released, we can send those not only publicly but directly to the plan takers who are interested in the event. It also really helps ensure that we're receiving compliant bids, because we can mark certain areas as requirements, and so therefore suppliers cannot submit their bid without filling in those essential areas, too. So, it helps reduce some time on our end. It helps to ensure that we're receiving qualified and quality bids as well, and helps to ensure that we're following the process, too. The event is then released publicly, again, once it hits a certain dollar threshold. Typically, with our procurements, once it hits ten thousand dollars, that's when they are usually released publicly. There might be the odd exception, again, for an emergency, or we do have some standing offer agreements, and those would not be released to the general public, but generally they are released publicly. The duration that they are open and available for people to submit bids varies. Again, as I mentioned, there are trade agreements that need to be honored, so we have to make sure that they're open for any required amount for a trade agreement. And then also, we use our own discretion, too, to determine how much information are we asking from these suppliers, how much are they going to have to provide for us, and determine a reasonable amount to have the event open for at that point. Following that, we evaluate the submissions typically. Sometimes we do have a lowest-price tender, in which case whoever submits the lowest price is deemed the, essentially, the winner. Depending on the level of spend, we have to go through various approvals. Sometimes that means bringing something to council for you folks to approve. Currently, as per our policy, any award that is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or higher must come to council for approval. Other than that, we do tend to evaluate a lot of our bids. Lowest dollar value is a bit of an older procurement technique, just based on lowest price is the best. Procurement has grown a lot, and we know that lowest price is certainly not always the best. Sometimes we need to think about things like lifecycle costs, we need to think about what kind of equipment a supplier might be bringing with, for the event. There are many other levels and things that we need to look at. So, oftentimes, we're searching for a best value approach, and we utilize those other areas that we need to consider, too, and not just the lowest price. So, when we do evaluate, the evaluation is performed by informed members of management, staff, involved consultants, and other key stakeholders. So, sometimes we are utilizing engineering consultants, sometimes we ask them to step in and help us with an evaluation, particularly if there's an area of technical requirement that we don't feel comfortable enough evaluating ourselves. Pricing is kept separate from a technical scoring, and that way the pricing is not influencing anyone who is doing the scoring. And then after we have our technical scores completed, then we'll open up the pricing scores. And then finally, we will look to award at that level. And so, approval granted, approval that we need is granted by the signing authority for the level of spend. Again, that might be CAO approval, that might be council approval, it just depends on the dollar value. Just to give you an idea of where the municipality has grown in terms of procurement, in 2024, we released a record amount of procurement events. These are publicly-released procurement events or limited to our standing offer agreements. We released fifty last year, so we're almost at one a week as an average, which is pretty significant. We awarded over nineteen-point-five million dollars in contract values. Again, that's not just for one year, sometimes those are five-year terms, but it's quite significant. In 2025, we've already released five events, and we have many more on the list that are still to come. And then another event that we're looking forward to in 2025 is I've been working on updating our procurement policy. There, it's, it has not had a large overhaul in quite a few years, and it's definitely time. There are certain areas that just don't work as well in 2025 as they worked previously. There's some language that needs to be updated. There, with the updates from the province that came out in December, we need to make sure that we're still remaining aligned with the provincial requirements for procurement. Our current policy is also relatively process-driven, and so we want to ensure that it maintains kind of the policy requirement that it's there to do. And so, with that, the recommendation is that the committee of whole receive the procurement at municipality of Kings council orientation as presented on February 18th, 2025, as information, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Kristi. Questions to Kristi, Counselor Gates?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, just for clarification, do you typically look for three quotes, and is it based on a point system?
Through you, Mayor. So, it all depends on the procurement event. So, we do typically, if it's, if we're just reaching out to get quotes, that's generally if it's ten thousand, if it's under ten thousand dollars. And so, when we do that, we do have a requirement for three quotes. There are certain times where we can't quite make the three, and then under those situations, we do have a form that we fill out that explains the efforts that we went to to get the three, and then we have to have that signed off by the CAO. And the, sorry, and then, and then based on the outcome of that, some are points-based. Actually, they're all largely points-based, how we evaluate them. Sometimes they're broken down differently, but generally, that is how it's done.
Counselor Sappington?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering how much of a prioritization there is in regards to procuring Canadian services and in regards to supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, there's, we do whatever we can to do Canadian. That being said, there are requirements once we get into the trade agreement threshold, so anything, once it hits certain dollar value thresholds, we cannot put that requirement on top of it. I will say, generally, we receive Canadian bids, primarily because we're a smaller area, and so the exception to that is generally IT. So, once we get into some IT software and things of that nature, that's where we typically receive more bids from the US. So, generally, we do receive Canadian bids, that's what we would ideally hope for. Again, they need to submit in Canadian dollars, so there's that requirement as well. In terms of putting that onus on all of our procurement events, we do what we can until it reaches a certain threshold, and then, and then we're not allowed to do so. In terms of the sustainability and aspect to that, we've looked at different times about incorporating different requirements into our procurement events. It's an ongoing discussion. Again, there is a requirement from procurement to be, to have fair and open procurement events for anyone to participate in. So, we're trying to understand how we can best make those accommodations to make sure that we're not, that we're still treating everyone as fairly as possibly, but also equitably. So, those are ongoing discussions. When we look at the, kind of the value added, those are some opportunities where we can, where we can look at some of those services, when we're looking at best value, there's some room there to add in some kind of diversity elements, too. But it's very difficult to put a lot of that into hard practice at this stage of the game. Right now, we're still very much building the procurement processes and understanding where we fit in, in terms of trade agreements and in terms of meeting the requirements from the province, and how we can build in some sort of diverse requirements in there as well. So, it's definitely a discussion, it's something that we're still working on, but we don't have anything currently in our policy that says, you know, we're looking for X amount spent in diverse ways.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, we have a mover and a seconder for the recommendation. Moved by Deputy Mayor Peckford, seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carry, thank you. Other businesses, are there any other business coming before council? Okay. Before we go to the comments from the public, oh, oh, sorry. Counselor Beth?
Thank you. Just want to give a little plug here for the Cambridge District School, Mr. Mayor. They're going to try to fundraise some money for a new playground, so anybody's interested in helping out in a playground, they're trying to raise over fifty thousand dollars. They've been fundraising for three years, and they have thirty thousand in the bank account, so we're going to put a big dinner and auction on, help them to create their new playground on April the 27th, 2025. If anybody's interested, tickets, you can contact the school or myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beth. Okay, before we go to the public comment period, I'm just going to mention a few things here. The municipality of the County of Kings is well aware that Acadia University has made the difficult decision to close its pool on June 15th, 2025. Due to the longstanding financial challenges associated with maintaining the pool, and I don't, maybe most people would have seen the article the president put in the Register recently, where they stated that even if they had the seven million dollars to repair the pool, they would have to close it for two years, which is devastating, I know, and we all are aware of that. The municipality respects Acadia University's decision and understands that this pool's closure will result in loss of valuable resources enjoyed by the Acadia community and community at large. The municipality of the County of Kings has been leading a discussion with our partners, including the towns of Kenfield and Wolfville, as well as other community partners, to assess the potential of a new regional recreational complex with an indoor aquatics facility in Genesee. The municipality acknowledges that the multi-dollar recreational complex is not a project that can be rushed, and the project plan has always been estimated at seven to an eight-year timeline. We're into the third year now. Thanks to the previous council, discussions and planning for potential regional facility have already been underway for three years, including the completion of a study to explore how to best meet the community's recreational needs in a responsible way. A project of this size can occur with solid financial planning, public consultation, and the support of key funding and community partners. The municipality will have more to share, of course, with this project, and more information available in the coming, in the coming months. With the closure of Acadia and difficulties at the Kenfield Pool, I know that we're all concerned and realize how important it is to... to to make these decisions sooner sooner than later. So at this time, I would invite any member of the public to come forward to make comments to the council. I would ask a few things. You would state your name and address for the record, and that you would have two minutes to make your comments, please. And you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, councilors. First, I want to thank you for the training. I feel like I could run for councillor now. Basically, my name is Mike LaPointe. I live in Port Williams. My address is 484 Canard Street. I have been a resident of this area for 16 years. And basically, since the beginning, I have noticed the lack of facilities for families, for young people, for seniors, et cetera. I want to thank you for how far you've come so far, because I think it's it's pretty wonderful to see that you're active on this subject. I've been following it very closely, and I know the last council was very close, very close to coming up to a decision last year. And unfortunately, elections came up, and that's that's what life is all about. I was watching the debates for mayorship and so on. And during the conversations, I noticed that maybe the creation of a new rec regional center was being pushed maybe a bit back. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but this is what I noticed. This is when I decided to jump in as a citizen. And behind me are no longer 500 people, but there's a lot of people behind us. If you go online, you'll see that we now have over 600 people, residents. Basically, we all feel very strong about the need of a regional center. I want to commend the young lady that made the report a while ago on the impact. I feel the report was very strong on quantitative measures, but not so much on qualitative measures. And by that, what I mean is there's a whole other saving that could be obtained by people exercising and staying healthy. I have a letter here as well from Dr. Michael Mindrum. I won't read it to you right now, because I know there are other people who want to speak, but we will send it to you today. I recommend that you read it. Dr. Michael covers everything, everything that needs to be known about why the citizens really need this, what I call, what we call the health and wellness sports center.
Thank you, Mr. LaPointe. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. We invite the next anyone else that'd like to come forward. And I appreciate your efforts to move things forward, Mr. LaPointe.
Good morning, Mayor Corcoran, council. Thank you very much. My name's Mike Landry. I live at 864 Upland Court in Kings County. Just wanted to reiterate what Mike LaPointe has talked about for a few moments. Again, thanking everyone for all their presentations and so on, and your attention to what we're working towards and knowing that it's almost three years in the process to date. One of the other pieces we want to keep in mind is the need of a facility to meet the needs of people that are from the infancy stage right through to our senior populations. It is so important that as we go through the different steps that were outlined just a few minutes ago, that we keep in mind the footprint of the facility, what it is that it's offering and to whom it's offering, so that we know what types of materials and how the facility needs to be put together if we get to that phase, so that it truly does meet the needs of all. We have a lot of people within our community, seniors right down through to newborns, that require and special needs populations that require certain aspects within any facility that they access. I just wanted to make that statement to make sure people are aware that in our conversations, we're looking at all those pieces and certainly would be happy to be part of any future conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry, and thank you for your offer to to be supportive. Everybody wants it, but we need everybody's support to make it a reality. Is there anyone else that would like to address county council?
Hello, Mayor and everyone else. Thank you for giving me this time to speak. A pool is a vital community hub.
Excuse me, I need your name and address, please.
It's Tammy McLeod, 144 Slater Road in Gasparrow.
Thank you.
A pool is a vital community hub where people of all ages connect through swimming lessons, fitness classes, and recreation. In a time when social connection is more important than ever, a pool fosters inclusion, friendship, and belonging. And as a teacher, I've seen the profound impact of inclusive programs like Smile on students' confidence and joy. And as a parent of a Triton swimmer, I know how essential a pool is for young athletes' growth and well-being. So while I'm very excited for the new aquatic facility, we must ensure that our community has a pool access in the interim. I'm advocating for a more collaborative effort. I think in this day and age, how do we break down? We talk about interprovincial barriers. I would like to see barriers broken down between universities and community. The Acadia University has provided our community with an incredible resource for many, many years. I don't know what that math looks like from a financial point of view, but from a wellness, I've moved to this community because of Acadia. I've lived here for over 10 years. I've actually questioned whether I will stay because Acadia is a place where I'm a university, my kids could take all these activities, and of course, life-saving swim lessons. Five years where people in Kings County will not have access for their family to do swim lessons, which I think is essential in any community, and we're not that small.
Thank you.
Well, we're excited for the new, so just to finish. I just I know that it is not precedent, it sounds like, that there is collaboration with the university on how to sustain wellness in our community and have infrastructure for all of those that avail of it. And that would be an interesting data collection, all the folks in our community that use that pool.
Thank you.
By working together, we can maintain access to this essential resource. And again, I thank you for your time. It's been nothing short of devastating for me and my family.
Thank you. I think it's been devastating for the whole community. And unfortunately, with the recent article that even if Acadia had the $7 million to fix the pool, it would take, they would have it to close it for two years. That's a big concern, big concern. Anyway, we're all trying to work together to make the best out of it, I'm sure. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I didn't write anything prepared. We came to support. My husband and I moved here.
I'm sorry, I need your name and address.
2018 Langill Drive, Coldbrook. We moved here just a year ago from Calgary. I used to work at the Y as well, so I encourage you guys to look at their model of volunteers and how they run their facilities. Sorry, I'm nervous. I wanted to, one of the reasons why we picked this area was because we're swimmers. I'm an international master swimmer. I've swam many places. We've lived in four provinces, and this is the first province we've come across where there's not a facility. So to answer Emily, let's your question between 25 and 50 meters. 50 meters is Olympic size, and that's international. So if you want to bring people and economy into this place, you need an international-level pool. You can have master's world competitions, age group world competitions. There's so many things that can open that world. With a 50-meter pool, you have so many other options, water polo, synchro diving. You can have so many different swimming lessons, every level possible. Adult learn to swim, it's endless. I was an aquatic supervisor for Vancouver Downtown Y as well. I'm also a Level Three National Swim Coach and a massage therapist. And there's just so many opportunities that an Olympic-sized pool and facility can offer. I just encourage you guys to really look into those options more. And once, if you're digging for 25, how much more is it to do 50? It's a thing you have to do right away. You can't go backwards and go, oh, by the way, we need to, that's going to double your costs easily. But if you're already digging and building to add another 25-meter pool, it's going to be minimal. And in construction, we've seen YMCA's go up within three years. And that is international-level YMCA's. Seaton play YMCA, look at the Seaton one in Calgary. That's a great example of an amazing facility that, you know, we can offer spin classes. You can have spaces for your drop-in centers. You can offer conference rooms. It's endless, what you can even have your council operate out of the Y, out of the facility. So it can cause a lot of inclusivity that way within the community. So anyway, thank you, I just needed to.
Thank you very much, and it's for your expert knowledge on this subject. Appreciate it. Anyone else? No one else? Well, I want to especially thank the public for coming today, I know, in 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 large numbers. Council appreciates that and all that that those that are involved. And we appreciate you you being here today. So at this time, I'm going to call for the meeting to adjourn. We will be coming back after a brief lunch into an in-camera special council meeting. So thank you all again for coming, and be careful out there in those roads. I just declared. I just declared.
Going to call the meeting back to order in one minute. Counselor Hiltch, you going to join us? Oh, is that what he was doing? Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. And for a roll call, all of council is here and accounted for with the exception of Counselor Tim Harding, So I would ask for a motion, please, to acknowledge that Counselor Harding is excused due to illness. Moved by Counselor Sappington, second by Counselor Allen. All those in favor or against, please press your button. We do have an agenda in front of you, council. Is there any errors or omissions to the agenda? Somebody move the approval of the agenda, please. Moved by Counselor Lutz, second by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please press your button. So at this time, is there any member of council that would like to declare a conflict of interest in anything that we're going to discuss on the special counsel agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then to financial services. And so I guess this is just a seven day notice that municipal council adopt the amendments of Policy FIN-05-009, personal property tax reduction as attached to the February 18, 2025 So we have a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Hiltch, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Now we'll go to Policy FIN-05-003, fees amendments for permit application fees on residential Motion to adopt the amended policy, please. Moved by Counselor Allen, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. And now we'll move on to a motion to proclaim March 21, 2025 as International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination in the Municipality of the County of Kings. And moved by Counselor Lutz, second by Counselor Sappington. Okay, all those in favor or against, please press your button. And now we'll move on to a motion to proclaim March 21, 2025 as International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination in the Municipality of the County of Kings. And we have moved by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. And now we'll move on to First Nations consultation. Motion to direct the C A O to formally issue letters to the First Nations of Nova Scotia[1178.10][1178.10]initiating the process for consultation discussion as outlined in the February 18, 2025 request Moved by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please press your button. So at this time, is there any member of council that would like to declare a conflict of interest in anything that we're going to discuss on the special counsel agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then to financial services. Policy FIN-05-003, fees amendments for permit application fees on residential units and Motion to adopt the amended policy, please. Moved by Counselor Allen, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, recommendations to committee of the whole. So that municipal council proclaimed March 8, 2025 as International Women's Day in the municipality of the County of Kings. Motion Counselor McPherson, second by Counselor Sappington. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please press your button. And now we'll move on to a motion to proclaim March 21, 2025 as International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination in the Municipality of the County of Kings. And moved by Counselor Lutz, second by Deputy Mayor Peckford. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried, thank you. Now we'll move on to First Nations consultation. Motion to direct the C A O to formally issue letters to the First Nations of Nova Scotia[1568.10][1568.10]initiating the process for consultation discussion as outlined in the February 18, 2025 request Moved by Counselor Best, second by Deputy Mayor Peckford. Any further discussion?
Does this mean that there is no chance of us giving them any sort of emergency funding help?
Correct. All those in favor signify by saying aye please, or all those in favor or against, please press your button. Sometimes I go back in history, don't I? Is there any other business coming before council? Any member of council have any business they'd like to bring forward? No, we'll keep moving on. Now we're in the public participation part of the... And I would remind any member of the public, if they'd like to come forward, they've got two minutes to speak and give their name and address. And I don't see anybody here, so we'll quickly move on to the next one.